Roll call.
Mayor Boeck?
Yes.
Clark?
Here.
Eisenbrunn?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Hodge?
Here.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, we do, there are a couple of changes to the agenda that I'm aware of.
Items from visitors, I have a proclamation for Olga Nelson and Tom will be here to receive that, but he's also at the Deadwood, be at the Deadwood City Council meeting, so he may be late, so we're just gonna kinda keep that floating until he gets here. And then, item 12B, it's a dedication of roads. Inside of that, Jim and Carol Boeck are the developers, and because we have the same name, although I have no financial or ownership position in that company, President Dan Hodge is going to be assigned to sign those dedication agreements. So, anything else that needs to be changed?
No more.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Second. Any conversation? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Declaration of any potential conflicts of interest. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on those?
Yeah.
Yes.
Could, Mike, could you elaborate a little bit on item 8?
Mayor?
Yes.
Brandy Jean has applied for the full-time position that we have available, Adam McMahon's replacement. She's not interested in full-time work, but has agreed to work part-time until we find a full-time position, so it is tremendous savings for the city to get Brandy in versus hiring an outside firm at $150 an hour to do the work, and she's very agreeable to stepping down if we find a full-time applicant, which so far, we've had virtually no success. And so, Brandy will, upon your approval, join us as a part-time engineer who is not guaranteed a set number of hours, but will work as needed as long as her average stays below 19 per year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrunn?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, items from visitors. First up is a proclamation for Disabled American Veterans Day, and we do have some gentlemen with us, but I'm gonna start by reading the proclamation. Whereas Disabled American Veterans was founded by World War I veterans on September 25th, 1920, and was chartered by an act of Congress on June 17th, 1932, and whereas in 2020, DAV celebrates 100 years of serving veterans of the armed forces, their families and communities, and whereas DAV is dedicated to a single purpose, empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respect and dignity, and whereas DAV accomplishes this by ensuring veterans and their families have access to the full range of benefits available to them, and whereas DAV provides free professional assistance to veterans and their families in obtaining benefits and services provided by the United States Department of Veterans Affairs and other agencies, and whereas DAV also provides outreach concerning its programs and services to the American people generally and to disabled veterans and their families specifically, and whereas DAV represents the interests of disabled veterans, their families, their widowed spouses, and their orphans before the federal government, and whereas DAV has fought tirelessly for equal access to critical VA caregiver benefits and services for several disabled veterans of all generations, resulting in legislation to expand eligibility to those injured prior to September 11, 2001, as part of the VA Mission Act, and whereas DAV copes presents the National Disabled Veterans Winter Sports Clinic and National Disabled Veterans Tea Tournament, has organized the nationwide DAV transportations network operates a charitable service trust, has built an active volunteer corps, offers veterans, transitioning military members and spouses access to employers through its nationwide job fair program, provides assistance through the DAV disaster relief program, and operates the Jesse Brown Memorial Youth Scholarship Program. So now, therefore I, Dana Boeck, Mayor of the City of Spearfish, do hereby proclaim that September 25th, 2020, is Disabled American Veterans Day. So thank you, gentlemen, for representing, and I have John Chris that would like to come up and say a few things, and we just really appreciate what you do.
Mayor and councilman, as a commander of the Northern Hills Chapter of the DAV, I wish to thank you for your acknowledgement of our work in the communities, and I further want to thank the citizens of the Northern Black Hills area for their generous support in what we do. We typically have a whole raft of programs with the veterans, and I'm not gonna take up any of your time. But again, thank you for your support and recognition.
Very good, thank you, and I'll come around and present this to you for a photo, we're gonna put on our masks though, right? Gentlemen, do you wanna come up and join us? Sam Millen, she presented today. Okay. They can't even tell we're smiling. Very good, thank you, very much. Shake the hand, I don't think we're supposed to, we won't have all the time. Thank you, appreciate it. So next is a proclamation for Olga Nelson, and I see Mr. Nelson made it just in time. Very good, good timing.
Hardly my forte, but thank you.
So whereas Olga Marie Girardini was born on Saturday, October 2nd, 1920, in San Zedo, Italy, to Gi, I'm gonna not get these names right. Giorgio and Angelina Girardini, and whereas at the age of 13 months, Olga and her parents left their ancestral home of San Mouchera and traveled by land to Triesta and at, on the Adriatic Sea, you're making this difficult for me, where they boarded the liner President Wilson for their ocean journey to the United States, and whereas on November 26th, 1921, Olga entered the New York Harbor under the watchful eye of the Statue of Liberty and proceeded through immigration at Ellis Island where the family name was shortened to Girardi, and whereas after searching for a home in Colorado and Montana, Olga and her family settled in the Black Hills mining town of Lead, South Dakota. And whereas after graduating from Lead High School in 1940, Olga worked for a time as a telephone operator before marrying John Edward Nelson on April 22nd, 1943, in Bozeman, Montana, and whereas Olga and John were blessed with three children, Judith Ann, Gerald Charles, and Thomas Roy, along with in-laws and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and whereas in April of 2018, at the age of 97, Olga decided to move out of her home of 68 years to join the caring community of Edgewood Vista in Spearfish, and whereas even though John passed away in 1981, Olga continued to live her life to the fullest, giving tirelessly of herself to her family, her church, her friends, and her community, and intends to continue to do so in the future. So now, therefore I, Dana Boeck, Mayor of City of Spearfish, do hereby proclaim that Friday, October 2nd, 2020, is Olga Marie Girardini Girardi Nelson Day. So, very good, and I wish she could be with us, but I understand she can't, but do you have anything to say on her behalf?
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for my.
Why don't you come up to the mic for us, so people on Zoom can hear you.
I apologize. Thank you, Mayor Boeck, Tom Nelson. On behalf of Mom and my sister, my brother, and all her friends and family, thank you for doing this for her. She would have been here, except three weeks ago she fell in her apartment and cracked her pelvis again. She has two titanium hips, and she is in a deadwood swing bed, and she goes home tomorrow. So we are going still to have a birthday party for her on the 3rd up at the Home State Opera House. There'll be things in the paper on social media, but she's doing very well, and thank you for doing this.
Yes, very much, our pleasure, so let me come around, did you wanna have a picture too?
Sure.
Yep, okay.
How much is it? Good to see you, thanks very much.
Happy birthday!
We will, we're gonna celebrate, thank you, thank you all.
Okay, moving on, city attorney, who is online with us, approved the second reading of ordinance 1327, this is amending Chapter 14 under streets, sidewalks, and other public places.
Ashley. This is, this is an overhaul of the cemetery ordinances, there have been no changes since the first reading.
Have to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrunn?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, approve the second reading of ordinance 1328, this is amending Chapter 9 Health Sanitation and Nuisances.
This is also an overhaul of this section of code, no changes since the first reading.
Have to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrunn?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, approve the first reading of ordinance 1329, this is amending Chapter 17 Traffic and Vehicles. Ashley.
A lot of the changes with this one are a reordering of the sections so that it makes more logical sense, but a big change was the appeals process for people who get parking tickets is laid out better, so everyone understands how that process will work.
Have to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
This is just semantics, but Division 3 is basically empty, so there would be nothing under it, and then you're going to Division 4. So is that something we need to change now, or is that just after it's approved and it's combined, I guess, what's the, how's that work?
I can look at, I'm not able to pull it up while I have Zoom up right now, but I'll look at it and make sure there's not a typographical error with a missed cross-out or something like that.
Yeah, looks like just.
If there is something that needs to change, I'll make that change. If it's substantive, then we'll have to redo the first reading.
It is not substantive.
Yeah, I think it's just the title is not struck like the content is.
Okay.
I think it's just, needs to be struck.
What's it?
Okay, so, all in favor of first reading?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next, approve the first reading of ordinance 1330, this is amending Chapter 4 under alcoholic beverages.
So right now, a business that's allowed to, under our current ordinance, a business that's allowed to serve alcohol on the sidewalk adjacent to their business is automatically prohibited from doing so if a special event covers the area that their business is in, and the changes that we make here are that council will have the authority to approve that prohibition or allow them to continue to serve on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Um, so, if a, basically, we would have to approve a special event and then say, but the bars can't serve, is that how this would?
Yes, that would, that would be the process, you'll approve the special event, normally a lot of special events are approved administratively, these ones would come to the council, and the council would approve the event, and then decide whether or not to allow the businesses within the area that the special event is being held to continue to serve alcohol on the sidewalk or not.
Okay, so the form that is filled out for the special event application, will that have a line item on it that would basically bring that to attention every time it comes before council?
Yes.
And then, the, one of, basically, this breaks it up into about three different categories, and the, one of the categories is basically a special event which would need city council approval, but yet it's got, city administrators approving the alcohol part of it, is, am I understanding that right?
Ashley.
Let me see if I can get that pulled up here.
So, the process right now for Brown Bag, they have to come to city council today, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Just one moment, Michelle, I think is going to talk on the Brown Bag process here.
Correct, so currently, any requests for the special alcohol consumption permits, those are approved administratively, so if the applicant makes it, if the criteria is met, then we approve those administratively in the finance office. So Jamie in the office reviews all of those applications, which we also review all of the special event applications, we're on the distribution list for all of those that come in, so we will be reviewing those to make sure that those that need to come before you for approval will come on the next council agenda.
Oh, so, I guess, let's, I'm trying to think of an event that would still come before council under this.
So the, the event that brought this to light is Downtown Friday Nights. We have several businesses on Main Street that have the permission to sell and serve alcohol on the sidewalk.
No, I, I understand that part of it, that we would have to take an extra step to allow or disallow, and I don't have a problem with that, I do think it should be addressed on the application somehow, so that it's reminded every time, I guess, the, the, the event of Downtown Friday Nights would still have to come to council, right? Okay, like, I guess the way I was reading, one of the sections in here is basically the city administrator could approve those without having to go to council, because it's crossing out from the council and putting in city administrator.
We have, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The direction I've given to all department heads, if the event disturbs the peace beyond a reasonable time, so if they're going to have a band that plays 8, 9, 10 o'clock, that comes to council, if we're closing streets for an extended duration other than a 30-minute parade or funeral escort or something of that nature, then those events come to council. So that's been the administrative direction I've given to all department heads. So Downtown Friday Nights would come to council.
So, could you give me an example of something that wouldn't come to council then?
Mayor, basically, a wedding that would rent the pavilion wouldn't come to council, farmers' markets, those types of things, those events that don't fall into those categories that I described would be administratively approved.
I guess I, I don't mind that some of these events do come to council, I guess I hate to see them, some of them not come to council, and I also think the, in the aspect of having to come to council for some of that curbs some type of events from happening because they, they can't put them together at the last minute, but, you know, you gotta have the timeline to be able to get it on the agenda and everything else, and that, because of, you know, the wedding period, so I guess I, I guess I don't mind doing my job as a councilman.
In the past, the council has decided that some would have an administrative approval because most of them are just in the normal range of business, and anything that is not typical would come to the council, so that is what the council direction that was given even a few years ago, so that's where we are. Right now, any, any other comments, questions on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, approve the first reading of ordinance 1331, this is amending Chapter 14 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places. Ashley.
Yes, so this is a new section in the ordinance, it's, previously, if anyone, any business wanted to serve their customers on the sidewalk adjacent to their business, to figure out how they were able to do that, they had to go to the alcohol section of the ordinances, but not every business that might want to do that is an alcohol licensee. So we pulled that out of the alcohol section and created a new section that creates a sidewalk service permit, so anyone, any business that wants to serve customers on the sidewalk adjacent to their business has to comply with, with this ordinance that you're considering right now, and then if they also happen to be an alcohol licensee and they want to serve alcohol, then they have to go to the alcohol section and, and follow those provisions as well. But this is the general, if you want to serve your customers on the sidewalk, this is what you need.
Okay.
Have to approve.
Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under engineering, approve the final under-over change order for the pickleball court. Kyle.
Yeah, we're just buttoning this up, but this is the last project that needs to be closed out, this was with GTI, they did all the subgrade base work on this, so this final under-over is, again, about 12,800 over, primarily due to additional sidewalk repairs that we had to do. Unfortunately, we could not access the court for the concrete in the pump trucks on the east side, adjacent to Canyon Street, because there's overhead power there, so we had to run trucks, concrete trucks and the pumper truck over to the west side, and it did break up some of the existing concrete, so that's the reason for the 10,000 millimeter overage there. Overall, this is a 33.5% increase, including change order number one that was done previously. As you may remember, that addition was mostly additional base course and some soft spots there that we had to take care of, it was the additional depth not anticipated from the existing asphalt core right back there. So we'd just like to get that approved, get it taken care of. For those of you who haven't seen it, it turned out great, looked really good, and there's a lot of people using it, so it's a great addition to the community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrunn?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Just a reminder for those on the Zoom call, please mute your microphones. And then, next, authorize Mayor Boeck to sign the easement agreement for proposed five-foot sidewalk along Hillsview Road as part of the Exit 8 Community Path Project.
Yeah, this is just something you approved prior, it's just in a different form that the county wanted to have that in, so basically the same, same overview as before, nothing really changed in it, just minor details there, so just wanna get that approved and signed again.
Have to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle. Under finance, approve the second reading of ordinance 1331, this is our 2021 appropriations ordinance. Michelle.
This will set the budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and there's been no changes since the first reading.
Have to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrunn?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries. Authorize the settlement of the sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2020A. Michelle.
We have been working with Colliers to issue our sales tax revenue bond for the workforce housing development, they've done a pre-sale on the bonds, and the sources and uses are shown on the screen there, will issue just under $9.5 million, will receive just under $10 million, the bonds are being issued at a premium, and then the average rate when you account for the premium on that comes out to be 2.15%, and it is a 20-year issue.
Have to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Questions? Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrunn?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Under human resources, adopt employee negative leave balance administrative policy. Hi, Jody.
Hi. This will be a temporary policy to allow part-time and full-time benefit-eligible employees to have a negative accrual for COVID qualifying reasons, so full-time employees would be able to have a negative balance up to 80 and part-time 40, they will repay this at half accruals or at the time of termination or resignation, the form basically has an agreement that they allow us to re-collect it out of their plan.
Okay.
Have to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
So this is basically just use, allowing people to use sick leave prior to them earning it, or sick or vacation, or?
Mayor? This could be vacation or sick leave, and yes, it would, right now, our policy says individuals cannot have a negative balance, this would allow individuals to accrue, I guess, a negative balance.
So, me as a private enterprise, I can't have comp time, I know the state can, can the city have comp time?
We do have comp time, but only for unpaid hours, so if, on a paid holiday, if I worked that holiday, or if an hourly person worked that holiday, the hours, I could comp the unworked hours, so the holiday pay I could comp, but the hours worked, we always pay per our policy, so unworked time could be comped, and we do allow that up to 40.
I guess I'm just curious if, let's say, somebody that's a snowplow operator that's gonna be putting in some moving time over the next couple months, instead of, you know, an evening vacation, if it can be a comp deal, when they are going to be in an overtime situation in the next several months.
Right now, our policy does not allow for that, we do not allow for comp on worked hours.
Go ahead, just trying to understand, thank you.
Yeah, and this is in response to COVID, if they need to be home with family members and trying to be more flexible in our policies. Any other conversation? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jody. Planning and zoning, adopt Resolution 202028, a resolution approving the project plan for tax increment District Number 6 for the City of Spearfish. Hello, Gina.
This is our state required, statutorily required plan that outlines the spending of tax increment District Number 6, we submit this to the state of South Dakota, and then they put the final finishing touches on what they have to do, and this just authorizes us up to, why can't you go to the amount on the second page? Why don't you scroll up? Let me scroll up just a tiny bit. Seventeen, so it authorizes, whoop, too far, sorry, stop. Authorizes up to seventeen point seven million dollars in tax increment district spending. State law does allow us to exceed this amount by thirty-five percent. And it got a little confusing in the planning commission, because they said, well, what is the actual amount? The actual amount is this. If it happens to need to pay more, seventeen point seven million, it comes back for a plan amendment. So there's a way that you can get more revenue recouped if you had to. That's it. Planning commission recommends approval.
Thank you.
Moved to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then, the next item, may I lead that in the meeting, even though I?
Mayor, it's up to you. The law says direct to community interest, and as long as you don't have that, you certainly will preside, but ultimately, it's up to you.
Okay, so I will just go ahead, unless you want to take it down?
Go ahead.
Authorize President, Council President Dan Hodge to sign the following documents related to the dedication of Redford Court, Gooseberry Road, Foxglove Court, and Buttercup Court.
Uh, bringing in the aforementioned streets for final city ownership acceptance upon this evening's decision by the council, we then began taking responsibility of those streets over for maintenance. Snow plowing will be obviously this season. We have worked back and forth to kind of fine-tune some issues with the developer, and we think we have a document that everybody's happy with. We do have some areas to be watched during the warranty period. And they are noted here in the document. There's also a punch list of items that need to be completed, but engineering felt that it was reasonable to allow those to proceed now, so that we can get them wrapped up and on the way for a final inspection. So Steph recommends.
Moved to approve.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, approve first reading of ordinance thirteen thirty-three, repealing ordinance thirteen twenty.
This is the ordinance that pertains to Joe Jorgensen's eight-lot subdivision up on Heritage Drive. We just had some issues with the legal descriptions from the original ordinance, so now we have to get rid of it, which is thirteen twenty. So this is just a formality to take that off the books.
Moved to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public safety, I think we have a higher.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you know, back in June, Chief Dever expressed his just in, in retiring. Convinced him to stay on while we went through the hiring process. We chose to do an internal hiring process first, as we felt we had some good candidates within the department and several good applicants. We screened them with a volunteer panel and with a city leadership panel. And Chief Ladson is the candidate we're bringing forward. I think he'll do a great job. He's been with the department for twenty-three years. It was every piece of equipment, and every staff member has served in capacity as a volunteer chief in the past and is currently serving as a division chief, which is basically our highest ranking volunteer position. Looking forward to getting him on board, and he's going to be just fine for us.
Moved to approve.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, how about a roll call? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrand?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Chief Ladson. We will have a ceremony for you later on. Welcome aboard. Public Works award the lowest responsive and responsible bid for the airport perimeter wildlife fence.
Good evening, ma'am. We had two contractors bid the project. The bids ranged from one point five and change million to the lowest bid of one point two and change. And the lowest responsible responsive bidder was Quinn Construction.
Moved to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrand?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, award the lowest responsive bid to Scott, for the Sky Ridge Development Infrastructure Project to Zanstra Construction.
Ma'am, again, we had six contractors bid the project. The bids ranged from just under six million to just under one million, and that was Zanstra Construction, they were the lowest responsible responsive bidder.
Moved to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrand?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dusty. Approve the bill list dated September twenty-one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Eisenbrand?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, mayor and council items, anything from the council? Marty, we'll start with you.
The strike reservation is meeting tonight. They were supposed to meet last Thursday and had conflicts with some other things, so they got moved to tonight, so I'll update you on...
That's what's next, huh?
Yep.
Going from here to there. Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, and department items, Mike.
We borrowed ten million dollars and spent for tonight, and I'm really proud of that. We, this Sky Ridge project has pushed many in this room and many that aren't in this room to their limits. And so, really exciting next step for our community. Really proud of it. The mayor has requested a groundbreaking ceremony, and we'll invite, of course, all the council to that. Stay tuned. We're looking at probably next week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday at some time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Lots of work. Thank you very much. Gina, anything more? Okay, Dusty, anything?
Just briefly, we reached a major milestone this weekend, actually, with our desire to have a webpage that the public can log into and see our snowplows and our trash truck drivers driving around, moving snow. So what our plan is, is that we have a four-facing webpage with a map on it and beginning of a snow event. All the roads will be red, and then as our plow trucks drive around, those roads turn from red to green. Perkylyan effort by five different IT folks to get this to where it is now. And this weekend, I was able to see a trial run of a fake car driving around the city streets of Spearfish, turning from red to green. I was crying, it was so emotional. We got it this far, and we're close to seeing it come to fruition, so I'm pretty excited about it.
People will be able to see they're coming, right?
Yeah.
Get there. Vehicles out of the way. Very good. Uh, Michelle, anything from you back in the corner?
Just wanted to give you an update on the CRF reimbursement request with the state. The finance office has been very busy filing claims. So far, we have eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents filed with the state, and we've received seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, ninety-two cents as of today. We still have about one point eight million to go. So a long ways to go, but we're making great progress. Josh files about seven or eight claims each day as we get the paperwork in.
And what's the final date of that? It's in October.
The, no, the expenditures have to be made before December thirty, and then we do have time after that to continue to file, because we do have to provide all the audit documentation. So we'll probably continue to file through, let's say, at least through the end of January, if not into February, if we have some late invoices. So as long as the work is completed, be by twelve-thirty.
Okay.
And then another item I wanted to let you know of, the utility bills, we're still waiving penalties for customers. And I did ask Jennifer how that is going for this year. So penalties in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So twenty eighteen, we had, from March through September, we had issued fourteen thousand in penalties. And then in twenty nineteen, it was just under twelve thousand. Well, for twenty twenty, we waived just over thirteen thousand, five hundred. So we're right within the average. That tells me our customers are still working with us, and we're still working with all of our utility customers to make sure that they can make their payments. Still taking arrangements. We're not doing any shut-offs for our customers as of right now. So we're working towards that step. Hopefully, by January one, we'll be back to normal process, as long as everything else returns to normal.
Great, good. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Tyler.
Real briefly, our community input survey has been live for about three weeks now for our Park and Rec Master Plan. Speaking with local governments, a realistic expectation would be about a five percent response rate based on your population. As of about an hour ago, we had about eleven hundred and thirty-six responses, which is about ten percent. So a lot of good comments, very active participation from our community. Probably close to a thousand comments to sort through and open-ended questions, so I'm very happy with the response on that, as well as we'll have two community input sessions next week at the rec center, where we'll meet in person and kind of have roundtable discussions with community members. And then for those that don't want to come in person, we'll have a Zoom option middle of October. So just another way to gather that data, get information that the community wants in the park and rec world, and then hopefully have a final product to you guys early twenty twenty-one for adoption for a ten-year park master plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I don't know if Ashley McDonald is still on. She had a conflict tonight, and so I don't know if there's anything else she wanted to add.
I don't have anything to add, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chief? I'm sorry, Director?
Hi.
I have a hard time.
Padward. Just a couple items. First, thank you for being patient with the fire chief selection. It was a long process that kind of got muddied up, because some of our applicants are wildland firefighters, and they've been gone a great part of the summer, which is my second item. We still have a crew in California that got extended. We have a crew that's in Colorado right now that's de-molding probably today or tomorrow, and will likely get sent west from there. So it's been a really, really busy summer for our seasonals and some of our other volunteers that have come out. So it's been a very productive summer for wildland.
Very good. Thank you. Did I miss anyone from staff? I think I did. Okay.
Yes.
Could you, like, if it's been addressed, I guess I wasn't aware, but the newsletter and the utility billing?
That's something that we put on pause during COVID and haven't resumed. We can certainly do that at any time. We're sort of doing an informal poll to see how many people read it and requested it. I think so far, we've had one person request it. It does cost the city additional amount to print those and mail them out. Something we can bring back at any time, really at the council's direction. Your call.
Okay, so if you want that to come back, just let us know and we'll put it on the next agenda. But I think with only one response, it's, it's not as much as parks and rec have got, so. Anything else from the council or staff? Hearing nothing else, we will open a time for public comment. You will have two minutes to speak, if you, on whatever topic you'd like to. So if, we're going to start first in the room. If there's anyone in the room that would like to speak, please go to the podium and state your name. Let's see, not a lot of movement. So we will go to Zoom. If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak, please unmute your microphone and introduce yourself. I'm not seeing anyone. Mike, do you have any messages or anything? They're saying, let me in? Nope. Okay, so there is no public comment. I will close that, and I guess I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wow. How about a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Wow. That was quick.